I wrote my name. You know what, we need to give three years of space here.
Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. It is May twenty third, six thirty P M. And we're in the city council chambers. Pardon? Today's May sixteenth. Just reading my script. Sorry, it's May sixteenth. Nicole's trying to get done with the year. Six thirty P M. We're at the city council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have, we will excuse Councilman Fitziamanu. And at the dais, we have Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hoon, Councilman Norfelt. And online, we have Councilman Christensen. We are also joined at the dais with Mr. Pyle, our city manager and Ms. Kamik, our city recorder. We will now turn the time over to Councilman Norfelt for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. I invite all of us to join with me to recite the pledge of allegiance.
I. Of the United States of America. And as a republic for which advance. On management under our individual with liberty and assets for all.
Hey, I'll now turn the approval of minutes over to the council for discussion or motion from May second, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve the minutes of May second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed. Okay, seeing none, they pass. All right, we will now come to our comment period. We will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to five minutes. Upon recognition from the mayor, you will approach the microphone. And if you did not have a chance to sign up, give us your name and address. Otherwise, just your name at the podium, please. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to speak more than once during the comment period. And speakers shall not expect a debate with the mayor, city council, or staff. The mayor, council, and staff will have time to respond within thirty minutes. So we'll now go to our signup sheet. And Speaker one.
Mayor Kelly Bertosch, fifty-nine, fifty-four, West Line Circle. I don't know if you guys will like me even less than what I feel, but I feel like you guys are doing injustice to us as a community. And I'm going to ask right now that Mayor, or to the Christianson to step down and resign. He's a dinosaur. He's lived off the government pay way too long. To me, he's a worthless man. Mr. Pyle, you're pretty damn close. You lied to me over two years ago and beyond. You promised me along with your engineers that there would be a traffic light at the end conclusion of the mountain corridor on thirty-five hundred and six thousand west. You've lied to me. You lied to me flat right out and to the public who've seen it on TV over those times. I'm holding you accountable, sir. Because you're the one that said you would look into it, you would see to it, and I was promised that it would be taken care of by the end of the project of the corridor. It's never happened, and you guys probably won't even give a dang about it. Before you're gone, sir, I either want your resignation, or I want a traffic light for us as a community where it belongs. You guys have made a frickin' joke out of that mountain corridor. Yes, you as West Valley City who voted all for it and said how hunky-dory it was going to be. It's a frickin' nightmare. To back up on traffic on forty-one hundred and thirty-fifth is ridiculous. From fifty-six to that mountain corridor, you have to wait four and five lights to make it through. Same thing on forty-one. This is absolutely ridiculous. That should have never built that way. It should have been done with the overpasses. And you're sitting here with a smirk on your face, Mr. Norfield. You shouldn't be here. You're just in your boot steps of your daddy. And that's how much the people are starting to feel. Now Jake, I got him in here along with a couple other neighbors. And I'm to the point now that he could be gone. Every one of you guys are replaceable. Because you're not doing what the community wants. Flat right, Mr. Harmon, I'm glad that you're here. And maybe you can overlook some of this stuff. All you guys do is pencil whip your lips and do the opposite. You have majorly brought in all this high-density housing, especially on the Kmart in forty-one, where hundreds of people in here said, we don't want it. You guys said, in the best interest of the city, we want it. You split-divided my neighbor's house, Latham's on six thousand. All I got is a gosh damn junkyard in my backyard to the side. I hope you're proud of it. Because your stupid ordinance come and find me for six ATV tires, brand-new ones, sitting on my wall in my backyard. Now, nobody could have seen them unless they came in my yard. So I told you last time, you already lost one ordinance officer for trespassing and doing shit, and it was my old neighbor who shot her. Yes, my old neighbor. The guy that had dynamite in his house and everything else. That one of our neighbors reported to the city. And then you shut down everything to take care of that problem, but you have just create more and more problems. I'm tired of your lying. Now, if we have to replace each one of you people with citizens that's lived here all their life that have a concern for this community, which Mayor, you should. Most of you people are movies. You never raised here. Well, I'm disgusted what you did to my dad's property. You made Brud Drive. Now, why was that named Brud Drive after Bertosch was beyond me? That should have been named after my dad. He owned most of that property out there, and he didn't even get a frickin' mention of any honorary, but you've got the Harmon home, you have everything else around here. Well, you know what? We're all related to the Harmon's too. We were a big family with interconnection for a lot of big businesses and a lot of big companies out there still. Where's their recognition for the pioneers that created this valley? My great-grandfather was one of the first pioneers here. His ranch was out there in the frickin' middle of the tailings, tailings pond. There's nothing to look at anymore. There's nothing left in most of the history. You took down my great uncle's home right there and put mountain corridor, which should have been reserved as a historical site. No, you guys wanted to have progress. Well, your progress is screwing up our progress as a community. We want changes.
Hey, thank you.
I'm really not done, and I'll be back every week.
All right, Speaker two. Jordan. Yep.
Sorry, madam, I got old all of a sudden, so I have to use my cane now. There's a couple of things I'd like to address. One that I've talked to Councilman Whitstone about, I live on sixty-four hundred west. My name is Jordan Anderson. There's a couple of concerns. One, I'll just start off with is I live on the stretch of sixty-four hundred west between Parkway and thirty-five hundred south. And we never see any police officers down there. We have Friday and Saturday night, uh, street racing, probably cars going eighty, ninety miles an hour down the road. I talked to one of the police officers over at Walmart the other day, and he says, talk to the city council because we and because we don't have enough people to cover that area. And I said, that I thought about that. I said, we have the second largest city in the state of Utah, and we don't have enough law enforcement to take care of these situations, or someone just to run radar once in a while down there. That's terrible. Secondly, I talked to William Whitstone once about this. I've talked to him once. I haven't heard back from him since. One thing that needs to be addressed, I have some neighbors that, well, there's a couple of families moving, living there in a single house, just like mine. They have ten cars. I didn't, I've been in my house for thirty years now, and I don't want a used car parking lot garage moving into my neighborhood right next to me. I've got cars, they've got cars in the backyard, they've got cars to the side, they've got cars in the garage, they've got cars parked on the side of the street. And there needs to be a zoning change, or there are some way to litigate where I think what's happening, and these people are taking cars home from their place of work during the day. And it causes during the winter time, it causes problems for the snow removal. It causes asphyxiation. They race their cars in the driveway where me and my wife just about choke to death. And they have people over there all hours and disturbing us in the evening. And I'd like to get this resolved. The councilman said to come to the council meeting. Here I am. Okay, and that's the last I heard. Let's get this resolved, or at least get some motion forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Speaker three.
Hey, Mike Markham. She knows my address. I'm kind of at a loss anymore. You know, I've been coming up here for close to fifteen years, if not more. Talking about different things and continually lose one battle after another, the gravel, which I thought should have been concrete. Given up forty percent of your front yard to a gravel parking lot. Lot of things not being just taken care of there. So I'm really not quite sure what direction to go with the city and what to ask for, and really what to expect. You know, I talked to Jim, he shows me pictures of a code enforcement issue that he's been dealing with for some time, a semi truck parked in the neighborhood. Now he tells me it's okay that he was told by code enforcement that it's okay to park in the weeds, the little weeds that's in the gravel. So I don't know what can be done, what can't be done. I think a lot of the things can be done, they're just not getting done for some reason. I don't know if maybe Jim and I, hopefully not me, are pegged as troublemakers. But I've had numerous people come to me and say, you know, Mike, because you will speak up, you need to run for a council seat. And I think, you know, if I did, if I got elected, I would be a one-term person, because they, nobody want me back again. And I would be an oddball sitting up there. Because I have a tendency to speak up. People have asked me multiple times, well, how can you speak up to your neighbors and tell them to clean up your yard? Well, if they don't care, why should I care? You know, I've tried and tried to work with people. Had one guy tell me to get out of his yard, or he was going to sue me and call the police. So much for going and trying to talk to somebody about working in their yard. That doesn't work. So I'm not quite sure if maybe somebody could give me some direction on where I ought to go, what I ought to do. You know, it's getting harder and harder all the time to defend to the people, to defend West Valley. When people come to me and say, you know, why do you, why do you live there? You don't have to live there. And my response is, is because that's where I'm from. I've been in my house for forty years. I bought it brand-new. My wife and I bought that house brand-new. Try to do updates every year, little bit, not quite like I used to. Which doesn't pay off because where the neighborhood's going. People just kind of willy-nilly now start stacking stuff out on the, out on their park strip. Regardless of when big pickups coming, or if we're getting dumpsters, or or, or whatever. And I don't know who's in charge of that area. Is that code enforcement? Is that parking? Is that Ray Hinkle that would stop by with the garbage pickup? I'm not quite sure who you call about that. I stopped in front of one house one day and took some pictures. On big pickup day, the person had loaded his front yard after the truck had already been through. He came running out after me, telling me that I couldn't take pictures of his house. And on and on and on, and was really unfriendly, which I'm kind of used to that. And he says, I'm going to call the police. And I says, good. I'll pull right over here and park, and I'll wait for them to get here. And then we can talk about this. You can stay on your side of the street, and I'll stay on mine. Well, so I called Ray. And Ray called Ace, and they were kind enough to go back and pick up the debris, even though they put it out after the truck had already gone by. I just think we're teaching people, groups, that they really don't need to go by the laws because they're, we we don't know how to enforce the laws, or, or we don't like to enforce the laws. You know, and I've been looking at lately, my fifteen years standing up here have been whatever time I've sat in all these, some short ones, some long ones, that the only thing it's done to me is created some enemies, maybe a few friends. But just like a guy told me in the neighborhood one day, he says, you know, most people in this neighborhood don't like you. And I says, well, it's only the people with the bad yards that don't like me. It's the people with the good yards like me. Then I looked at him and said, and you don't like me. You know, ironically enough, they just made him the bishop. Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, Speaker four.
Jim V. Sock. It's been, it seems like it's been a long time since we've had a council meeting. I have a long list. I would like to see put to the people of West Valley City a vote on the change of government, hearing from some of our council people that, oh, they don't understand, they don't know. I give our citizens a little bit more. Let's see, I think they're a little bit smarter than some of you guys are giving them. They will look up the different forms of government. Sorry, Mayor, sorry. It won't be just a blank vote, you know, oh, I'm going to vote, you know, th- this way, because that let, let's give them the benefit of doubt. Let's have our meetings. It's in the law. We have one of our representatives come up, and she talked about, oh, we need to have all these special meetings. There, there's rules and regulations on changing the form of government. And what needs to be done. We don't need to have extra meetings. Now, if you want to do that, that's great. But let's put it out there for the people to vote. If it was such a good way to have a city manager, why doesn't Salt Lake have it? Why doesn't Salt Lake County? Why did West Jordan change it? Uh, council member talked about, oh, they talked with West Jordan, and well, several of us talked with West Jordan. Um, you know, their change happened with COVID and the way that their tax dollars and stuff. Yes, it was hard for them. You talk to the residents, they like it. We need to let the people of West Valley City, the hundred and forty-two thousand. Yes, they're not all going to vote. We'll have eleven to fourteen thousand vote. At least have the opportunity to be the voice for that. And there's fifty million reasons why the, the bombshell from a few weeks ago. Now they're saying all eighty-eight are I forgot how to say that, that it'll be different money that'll be paying for that under RDA money. They'll be paying for that debt, but even on the current debt structure, it's another forty years on the Culture Center. That's ridiculous. That's, to me, is incompetent. You guys were talking about in the study meeting about how executive orders and stuff. The reason why those executive orders got around is because the majority of the council in the past. Mr. Pyle has four of them, and has had four of them in his pocket. And I say that, I don't mean he literally had them in his pocket, but he knew they were going to vote his way regardless. So he could do whatever he wanted. And that's another reason for a change of form of government. We can't vote him out. You know, we can't really fire him when he has a contract either because of the buyout clauses and stuff like that. And you need four votes. As long as he can keep four, he can do basically what he wants. Healthy West Valley. I'm going to change into that. Every other committee in West Valley, you have to be a resident of West Valley City. It should be the same for healthy West Valley. If they want to be a voting member of the healthy West Valley, they should be a West Valley citizen or a person. They could be a member of the committee, like with the Clean and Beautiful. We have outside people that will come in and help, but they are not a voting member, and that's the way we need to keep all our committees, and we need to be consistent. We've lost some great people in the Clean and Beautiful Committee because they moved out of West Valley, and they technically couldn't be on the committee. They can still help us. We need to be consisting, consistent, putting things on the study meetings. You guys got into a little bit back and forth the other day. You can go back and review the last year. Majority of the meetings, one person makes a comment. It's put on there. You don't need four vote. You don't need these rules, you know, that, that's some of the council people, it sounds like they're crying about because they're not getting their way. They're not in the majority anymore. It's, you're representing the people. The people want to hear the stuff. I love when when Councilman Harmon, sorry, Mayor, when, when the council brings up, and they want it put out there to the public, not these, oh, it was sent in an email. No, put it on the agenda. If you're going to talk about it in a meeting, it should be on the agenda for all of us to hear. Once again, I'm turning around. Code enforcement, what are they doing? Markham talked about the the weeds. I sent one in where they're parking on the weeds. Weeds are over six inches tall. It's a rock surface with weeds in it, which makes it an improper service. He sends back, not a violation. Incompetence at the top, incompetence at the bottom. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you. No one else has signed up? Was there anyone that didn't have a chance to sign up that would like to speak? So your name and address, please.
My name is Carrie Beeson. I live at fifty-six, forty-four, west, forty-three, sixty, south. Um, I'm going to complain about the vacant house next door to me. It's really bad. I called Officer Christensen. He said, well, the weeds are over my knees. It's alfalfa growing there. I called Officer Christensen. He said that there is nobody over our area right now in the code enforcement. So I'd have to probably call Officer Willie Wood, Willie. What's his last name? Officer Willie. Um, and I said, well, can you get me updated on this? He's like, well, it's not your property, so it's none of your business. I said, well, it's right next door to me. They're over up to my knees. And he's like, well, if the bank owns it, there's nothing we can do for you. Well, it's West Valley. It needs to be taken care of. When it dries up, it's going to cause fire hazard. Last year, it got to over seven feet tall. Some of the weeds in his driveway was up past his garage door before West Valley did anything about it. That's not right. In the middle of July, if somebody did a sparkler or something, that's going to cause that house to go on fire, and mine's right next door. There's a problem with that. We need consistency. And usually, when I do call it in, we'll give it three months. It takes three months for those to get cut down. That's not right. And I talked to the guy, he came in to go into Russell's house. He wore his suit to go in there because I guess the bank wants him to check to see if the water was broke. The water main has been broke. There is water gushing down the street last December or January. So they did shut off the water. So nobody can even water those, but then the banks kind of backed off on it from what I've gathered with the talks with their people that's been going there. And so it's just sitting there vacant, boarded up with weeds out of control. I don't like living next door to that. And it brings the value of my home down. I actually was thinking about selling because of my neighbors, the ones that do mechanics on the other side, and now in Russell's yard for twenty-five years. He hadn't taken out his trash in twenty-five years. He is peeing and pooping in containers because his gar, his bathroom is so full of garbage, and he's lining it up in the hallway. That guy said it smells like pee, and there's mouse poop everywhere in that house. And I live next door to him with a six-year-old child. So we need to step up and do some with the code enforcement. It's not right. My neighbors on, on the other side, I think they did get a letter from somebody because they haven't been doing their little stuff lately. And they did take these jacks away. And I noticed he took some of his tools by, I mean, he had those huge tools. You know, and he took those away on a trailer, but who knows how long that's going to last. I don't think it's going to last long. But as far as code enforcement, we need one more person as we're short one district. There's only, there's nine vacant, there's nine people and only eight people working. There's nobody working on weekends, so they can't catch people. And it takes too long to get stuff done. We need you guys to step up and do, run West Valley better. That's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Richard Newack. I've been up here before, so it's kind of disappointing, but not surprising. Every time I come here, you have a lot of unhappy citizens. So currently, there seems to be some dysfunction in the type of way that governments run. So anyway, I did post some reports. So I've run this bird rescue, so I have everybody that comes on the property signs their name, my employees, volunteers, anybody that interacts with the agency. So I did post some reports. So apparently, there was a complaint. And that complaint was made by a man named Matt Winlocker. So he actually was court ordered to do a hundred hours of community service, which he completed, but I guess he hates the establishments, so made a complaint. So when I asked the officers, was there a complaint? They said no. So they lied to me. And it doesn't do any good to lie to me because I can pull these reports and find out what's in them. And he didn't want to, he didn't discuss why he was there. He just called it a follow-up. So if the officers would speak with the citizens and explain what the complaint was, they didn't have to say who it was. Just discuss what the complaint is. I can make efforts to make sure that that's not observed, or it is a viable thing, fix it. He never said anything during his inspection. So I'm really dissatisfied that the you know, your officers don't work with the public, because that's what I'm asking. Is they need to work with people. If there's a complaint, explain the complaint, and I can explain, or there could be ways to fix it. Same thing with ordinance. You know, the hometown people, if you have an ordinance problem, you can't fix it. Hometown can come in, and they can assist and help with things. And my particular problem needs to be fixed internally, which I'm perfectly capable of doing. I just need to know what these complaints are. And they need to be documented properly. So some of these reports I read, they came back a week later. A week later, after a report to do welfare check. And then this one report said the same area, it looked like it not been cleaned in a week. That's an absolute lie because I have a ten-year-old employee and I have pay stubs to prove it and he can testify that that's all he does on my property. His job is only to clean. He has no other function there. Plus I have another volunteer that works six days a week and that's all he does is clean. So I'm very disappointed in, in the officer's ability, not only to lie to me personally, but to put lies in the reports. Which can be shared with other agencies and they just go on about what they read and they trust all this guy's an officer, he wouldn't lie. And that's absolutely not the case. So, so I agree with, uh, Man in Red, there's, there's. In blue, the government, something's gotta happen here. Needs to, needs an overhaul, big one from top to bottom. So. Basically, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, was there anyone else that wouldn't, wanted to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay. And Nicole, there's nobody online, correct? Okay, thank you. So we'll now close the public comments, um, turn the time over to the city manager for any comments.
Thanks ma'am, I don't have any comments tonight.
Hey, thank you. And to the council, any comments? Okay.
Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you all of yous. I'm sorry, sorry. Thank you all of you to come here and to express your concern. Um, about the, uh, uh, city here. Appreciate very much. Uh, I'm not hiding from you, um. I, I have been bringing it up about the, our new form of government. And we are debating right now and we try to, uh, hopefully we have enough, uh, vote. So we can get that thing done. Um, the reason I'm doing that because. The new form of government, I feel like the current form of government right now is so many layers and, uh. Very confusing, very, very confused. Um, it caused a lot of problems that we just discussed in a, a study meeting. Earlier tonight, you know, something we misunderstanding. So, so glad we cleared it up and appreciate, uh, all. Of us involved that discuss and have that discussion to clear thing up. But very confusing, multiple players, multiple layers in, in this kind of government. And we want to turn to local. People here, the citizen here, control that manage the city and not like big business. It's like we are running right now a big business. And we have a new form of government. It's a strong mayor. Strong mayor, like the mayor can't land here right now. If she a mayor, new form government, she can make decision for everything in this city and she know. It's where the pothole, what. Where, uh, is and where's the, what time we're gonna have the garbage can pick up and how is, uh. The neighbor or the people in the district one or district three or four, um, basically. Go back to local people. And I'm not hiding from you. We've been talking about for months now. And hopefully we have enough votes to do that, uh, to vote. Uh, the new form of government will, uh. Help us to, just like something you bring it up tonight. I think it will take care. I personally didn't think it take it quickly. Um. But, uh, still working on, to, to let you know, to working on debating and. And, uh, discuss, we could have multiple discussions and, um, hopefully we can, uh, uh. Have our vote before August, uh, I believe August of this year. So, uh, that, um, we trying to do, so, uh. You can go out and talk to your friends and people in your district and people in your, uh. Neighbor and then to tell them just about that's we are planning to do and we, uh, want to. Have some involvement from, uh, from you guys. And I know some, uh, council members here will. Go out and we'll have a town hall meeting and to go to their town hall meeting and ask some question if you, you have any question for, for them. But that's all I, I say tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, we will move on to our public hearings and we have application S A one. Twenty twenty-three. And I'll turn it to Mr. Pyle.
Thanks ma'am. This, uh, first public hearing is for the Tomadaka subdivision, amending lot one of Fesen Park and lot two fourteen of Hundred Hills. Number two subdivision. And basically this involves, as it described, just two particular, um. Residential lots that are both already developed and the same owner owns them both and wanted to adjust a portion of his lot line.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for any questions or a motion on this subject. Oh, no, we didn't. We're just gonna end before it starts.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, we're fine.
Got a public hearing, yes.
So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue?
Again, Kelly Burtos. I'm against it, mainly because you're for it. I'm gonna go against everything you vote for, sir. And each one of you, if I have to. Because you're not looking in the best interest of the community. You're looking at what's best for you. And I'd like to know how much money you guys are getting in your pocket sometimes from some of this shady dealing. Yeah, I know how it works in the government. I spent thirty years in it. So I know this good old boy club. I know it very well. And I was a whistleblower and that's why I no longer worked at that place. Because of this wrongdoing of what goes on here. You guys think you can spend millions and millions of dollar. On whatever you want because you want it. It's not what we want. And that's what you guys better look at. When you're saying this new form of government, you need to get rid of these old dinosaurs. To bring in new. We need new blood in this place. This blood has been tarnished so many times. Ever since it's become a city, all you guys do is what you want. It's not what we want. And that's what you're not listening to is the community, folks. I can promise you, if you listen to your constituents, your people. You'll have a lot more input and you will be a little bit more smiling and happy working together instead of against us. That's the problem here. There's no transparency in you guys. And you know what? The transparency should be, there's no closed doors. There's no such thing as a closed door meeting in a public setting. You guys are government for hell's sakes. Don't try to hide behind it. Enroll people into it. Talk to the people and tell them what your concerns are and what your wishes are. Maybe he can bring us on board to it. But quit doing all this other crap before you do because you're gonna turn that into exactly what you did in my area. And you don't need to split, divide and subdivide and add more high-density housing into what's already cramped path. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish, wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period and turn it over to the council. Our action item is ordinance twenty-three dash eleven.
I move for approval of ordinance twenty-three dash eleven. Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We all now have a public hearing, um, in accordance with application S A two twenty twenty-three. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you ma'am. This is a second final plot approval. That can is Mr. Roman Fraser at thirty-three twenty south and fifty-six hundred west. And is requesting final approval for the Mountain View Business Plaza subdivision amendment. And this will amend and extend lot three of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address this one?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Fifty-six hundred is a nightmare as it is. You've already got multiple businesses. A lot of homes in there and a lot of hotels, motels, or hotels, I should say. Why we want to condense more traffic, more people in an area where we don't have the infrastructure to hold it. Makes no sense, folks, but you guys will go ahead and vote it in anyway. I can see your looks, so smile, mayor. Yeah. You're gonna be gone. I'll run against you. I might not be the sweet-talkingest personality person around, but I'll tell you what, at least I am honest. That's what we need in this new government. Is honesty, not smirks. You wipe the smirk off your face, mayor, because it does not look good in your record. I'm gonna call it how it is and there's not a dang thing you can say or do about it. I'll go against everything you guys do because I'm part of the public. I'm part of Hunter. I don't like your city. I never have and I never will. I tried to join it. I've got involved with it and I got railroaded out. Because people try to get involved and then you have. Your side get involved and say, oh, we don't want those kind of people here. Well, my kind of people, the best kind of people. Because we get action. We take action and we stop wrongdoing in its tracks. I'm tired of the way you guys have done it. You guys are miniature version of Peyton Place down there. Bluffdale. And if you know what's going on down there, maybe you better look because you know what? There's lawsuits already right now and I'm in one with them. We can do the same thing with you guys. And you know what? Maybe we're gonna have to. It's we the people, folks, not you as the city council members. It's us. You guys gotta remember who you work for. I see you back there laughing at your table and all kinds of stuff. Think this is a joke. Well, guess what? It's not, folks. This is reality. Reality. You're wrong. You're wrong. You're wrong. And that's what people need to say is we're wrong. I'm sorry, Mr. Harmon, you're involved in the middle of this stuff because you're blindsided. But I hope you're new enough to realize. If you keep doing what they're doing, you're gonna get the same stuff. Upset people. And we need new blood.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this?
You know, I do live four houses off of fifty-six hundred west and I agree, there is too much traffic on that. Bring in more businesses and stuff like that to this street is gonna just cause more accidents. More kids getting hit because you've got that, that skate park and stuff and. I think it's stupid because Mountain View is supposed to take some of that off of fifty-six. And like I say, I live right off of fifty-six, four houses off. And it's horrible, especially during rush hour or the concerts up at the USANA. I can't get home. And bring in more businesses like this to the street. You're asking for trouble.
Okay, thank you.
These properties. These properties seem to be a pretty big debate.
Can you give us your name, please?
I am Richard Newak.
Thank you.
So like the last property that was in a neighborhood, they were trying to change zoning from A to M. Um, I think a good suggestion would be to, if. These types of things want to be done, they should be informed like the neighbor, that neighborhood, or at least the surrounding people to see what they think. Of that because if I wake up one day and this is happening in my neighborhood, there's gonna be a bank on the corner of, of one of my streets and I had. No idea that this was approved and run through. I don't think many of the citizens there knew it either. And some of the people that live directly next to some of these developments not, not. Might not appreciate it and would like to know before these things happen. So they can at least give their comment. So people in that neighborhood say, well, yes, maybe we do need this business complex because maybe it'll, I can get a job there, maybe. It helps, but the next neighbor may say no. So I think, you know, a lot of these things need to have public input in them. I think that's. Kind of reiterates on my original complaint. There's not enough, uh, hand-to-hand talking with the citizens and the government. So. That was just a suggestion that there should be notices sent out to the neighbors around some of these developments to let people know what's going on. There'd be less animosity when things just pop up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim, he's like, he'll normally come up and talk on these. And on these first two, these are owners. Who are just making a minimal change to their property. Their property. One is change, just moving the property line, which you guys just passed. And I believe the next one is a similar thing. It's already businesses in the area. And, um, yes, I agree that there's a lot of traffic on there, but. What they're asking to do is not gonna change the traffic. It's not gonna increase or anything. It's a little change. So I. You know, I was sitting back there and I love the passion of the community, but, uh. You know, we're, we're talking about a little bit of change. We're not talking about a overlay zone or, or a big thing. And, um, I just felt I had to say something.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll now close the public hearing and turn it to the council.
There was one more.
Oh, there was one more? Sorry. Did not see that.
Sorry, that's okay. I'm Connie Anderson. Um, I'm just wondering, I'm looking at that, is that? Um, well, you had thirty-fifth and fifty-six. Is that on there showing north or south? Where that?
So the north is to the top.
The north is to the top.
It's the former key mark building.
Okay.
They're just changing a lot line in the parking lot.
Okay, I was curious what that was. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, anyone else like to speak? And I'll look at all of you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it to the council for. Action on ordinance twenty-three dash twelve.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the city manager, can you refresh, uh, me about this? Uh, project again. It's a subdivision?
Yes, absolutely. So it's a amendment of one lot in the subdivision. It's lot three. Um, the subdivision was recorded back in twenty and nineteen, so that's four years ago. And the original consisted of six lots on that. It's right there on fifty-six hundred west. Um, did you have any questions about the buildings or the businesses or the, anything like that?
How many, how many units we have?
Sorry, what?
How many units we have?
How many what's?
Units.
Units, two.
Two.
I mean, there's a bunch of units there on the property, but this involves the two, um.
Okay.
Areas.
There were parcels, two parcels.
Parcels, yeah. Yeah, good. Thank you.
We're combining two into one as far as I can go. It's the car wash. So the car wash is one parcel and then the property behind it is another parcel. They're owned by the same owner. No.
It's not.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Trying to. We have studied this.
It's right next to the, not from the, so our public hearing portion is over. So we need the audience to be quiet while we make our decisions. So. All right, so to the council, is there any discussion or a motion on this, um, ordinance?
So I'll just.
Twenty-three twelve.
I can just discuss for a minute.
Sure. You wanna tell me a story?
Tell you a story. There's two parcels.
Yes.
One has a car wash on it. One is just parking lot. They're gonna put it together, right?
Yes.
We know that. What we don't know is what the owner will do after. And he, he could, he could put another restaurant or building. But you have to subdivide that, right?
Yes.
So you'd have to do an, another application for a subdivision. And, uh, that would come with a. Development agreement.
Yeah, and Mr. Pastrick might even have some further detail on plans if council's interested in hearing that or, or other information that the owner has provided. I don't know. Is there anything further, Steve? Okay, no, not at this point.
But I'm just assuming that down the road, we, we would see something where he would want to maximize that parking.
If, yeah, if that's even his plan. I mean, looking at the parcels and.
I don't know why you're combined without having a plan.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, yeah. I mean, the car wash, he wants to keep running.
Yeah.
Well, for the, for the present.
For the present.
Something better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve, uh, Z one two twenty twenty-three. Is that right? Did I get the right one? I got the wrong one.
Twenty-three twelve.
Twenty, twenty-three twelve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. We will now have a public hearing for app, application Z one twenty twenty-three. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. So this is a zone change application. Thank you, ma'am. So this is a zone change application at seventy-one oh-three West Gates Avenue. As you know, there are various. Commercial entities that have, um. Been developed and changed use there on Gates Avenue on that north, north portion as the map shows. It does have some. Uh, residential exposure to the south. There's kind of a mix in that area. Anyway, he's asking for a. Zone change from agricultural to manufacturing on this half acre lot. And, um, if approved, he intends to build two eighty-four hundred square foot buildings to house his business.
Okay, and then our second, um, action will be a development agreement? As well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn the time over to the public for public hearing or public comments.
Again, I'm gonna vote no. You guys have taken all the green belt away. Thank you, each one of you. We've lost our. Heritage of farming community. This is what this car used to be out here, is a farming community. And you ruin it with a great big high-rise buildings and all this other stuff, and then you wanna change in zones? You know what? We need some of this zoning still here to protect people in the green belt. There's some people that like to grow gardens. Why not put that as a public garden? Make that as part of the west valley's image? Of giving back to the community? Instead of taking more away and creating more crap? Do something positive with this stuff. You won't get the lip from me. And you probably won't get a lot of lip from people. They'll be encouraging it going, great, it's about time our city's taking it. A look at our future. See, you guys are not looking at our future. You're looking at now. Well, guess what? If you start going now, there is no future. We gotta protect what green belt we still have. Cause we don't have much here anymore. And it's a sad thing that you guys have let progress get in the way, where we used to have wheat fields. Progress of alfalfa fields and cattle. You're taking it away and put all these high-density subdivisions and housing. I, I, it saddens me when I go buy our property and see what you guys have created with it. It saddens me. There is no history for our kids. With your future that you're looking in, in the now. We gotta stop looking at this and prepare ourselves for later down the road. Self-sustaining is what we need to be. Now, if you would do projects like this and create green belts and stuff for communities to have community gardening. You're gonna be working with the community instead of against them. Instead of putting all this high-density bull crap and only allowing one point two-five percent car per parking, and that's out of your guys' mouths on the Kmart, one point two-five. That's not even one and a quarter car. Per housing unit. So where they gonna park on the street? Our streets are not parking lots. I said that for several years. Our streets are not public lo- parking lots. They're public access, streets. Highways. For your public works departments to come down and do their services for us as a community. Sometimes they can't even get down there. And yet your code enforcements are out there doing bull crap stuff? Of getting somebody for tires? That you couldn't even see? Go up a few of them houses around my area, and you'll be surprised at how big a junkyards all are. They are. If I have to give you addresses and phone numbers and pictures, I'll be more than glad to flood you with them. If that's what it takes, that's what it'll be. If you're gonna look at on the paper. A map. Then you by dang, you're gonna look at a video. Of a. Somebody shooting a drone down, seeing all this stuff. Cause what you guys are doing, and I know you're doing it in my area right now. You're in the process of subdividing. Well, you know what? We have no water pressures it is. I can guarantee you. I used to put water clear out in the middle of the street with four sprinkler heads. And now I can't even get, without even putting in two zones to get it to there. You guys are not looking at the infrastructures. This infrastructure was designed for back in the. Seventies. And we're not upgraded. Build your community with us involved. And not just your, like these, Mr. Pyle. You and Mark Reader, two peas in a pod, and I'm sure you know him very well. Because he can sit there and look at you and lie to you at the same time. I don't trust you. At all anymore. I don't trust you. You're a liar. You're a pathetic liar, as a matter of fact, and I'm gonna ask your resignation. So these guys don't have to vote you out. We the people want you out. So that we can. Let the government here run this city, the way it's supposed to be ran, and not by you, because every one of them has to look at you for your approval. You're wrong, buddy. You're nobody. Get out of this city. Get out. We don't want you here. I hope you understand that. We want our mayor to be able to manage the city with her counsel. Not you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak to this one?
Mike Markham, I think we're getting a little carried away here. As I look at this piece of property in question. Um, it appears to be a wrecking yard. Um. And anybody that knows any history about a wrecking yard, the grounds there are probably so polluted that you wouldn't wanna plant carrots. Um, usually the wrecking yard people that I know. Um, as they sold the lot, the purchasers had to come back and sue them, because as they tried to do foundations, they found nothing but buried tires. So, as I look at this piece of property in question, and, and if I had one of those residential houses by it, I. I would welcome, welcome a large building with the, uh, uh. What do you wanna call it? The. The rules, regulations. That time of operation and, and so forth that can be done there. Um, so. You know, a lot of these things are so small and such a change, it's not gonna make any difference whatsoever. Um, and I'm not running for an office, obviously, so I can't be voted against. Um. But, uh. You know, a lot of these things are just small changes. You know, we can't be mad at the city for subdivising, subdividing these properties. We need to call. The property owners are selling the property to developers. Um, it's just like my property in Camas. I told them, don't be mad at me for being here. Be bad at your family members for selling me the property. You know, um, we've got all the big subdivisions going out here. Um, you know, don't, don't be mad at the city. Um, it's, it's, it's. The farmers that sell on the property call and get on the farmers' butt for selling the properties and making these changes. You know, it's pretty difficult to turn down a million dollars for a couple acres of property. I surely couldn't do it. Um, I had a guy call me, wanted to buy my house the other day, and I told him he'd have to start at five hundred thousand, and he said that much, and I said, yeah. You know, not that it's worth that, but you know, there's no use. I could roll the dice. Um. But yeah, some of these changes are pretty dang small, it with existing properties. I think this one here is an improvement. Over a wrecking yard and everything else that's going down there. I'd like to see more of that area get cleaned up from the wrecking yards. But, uh, in my day, we probably shop those wrecking yards to get piece our cars together. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this ordinance? Application? Only once. You've already spoken, so. All right, so we'll turn it to the. I'll close the public hearing, and we will turn it to the council. Our first action is ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen. The zoning.
I'll say something, Mayor. Um. I just wanna say thank you for. You guys come up here and say something about. This matter. But I, I'm not appreciate your call people name here. And attacking them. I'm, I'm, I, eh, let my, my, my turn now. My turn.
Anything else from the audience? She'll be asked to step out, please.
All right, it's my turn. Okay? Whether. When Pyro, his city manager, he doing something wrong or right? You cannot say. To him in front of the puppet right here, use this. Puppet here and attacking him. Even our council members or, or mayor. You cannot use that. That's matter to attack personally. And that's, that's not right.
Don't have to be attacking me in this meeting, dude.
No, I'm attacking you.
Yeah, no, he's attacking me. So. Tom, you can be dismissed too. Get out of here.
No.
Yeah.
Let, let, let me talk.
Your boss. Go get your boss. And I'll challenge you in the court a lot, and I will challenge and sue you as a city. Buddy, no. Mayor, I'm gonna come after your job. Tom?
Okay.
I, I appreciate you. You, I, I appreciate, I appreciate you, but you cannot.
You do nothing like that. Keep everything, get away from me, get away.
All right.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three thirteen.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen? Well, it looks like we lost Councilman Christensen. Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu? Or he's not here, I'm sorry. Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so we'll now move on to the resolution twenty-three dash sixty-six, six, which is the development agreement attached to this application.
Motion to approve that resolution twenty-three sixty-six.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we now have ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This would allow for adoption of the twenty-twenty-one edition of the International Building Code. Which includes, um, a number of different types of codes, including energy conversation, fire. Uh, mechanical, plumbing, those sorts of things. This is something that is done every few years. And this is a three-year, apparently, um, revision that we're considering right now.
Okay, and we follow the state on adopting these as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn this to the council. For discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three fourteen.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we have, um, our resolutions. We have resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I'm sorry, I got myself, uh, lost there for a sec. This would pass a resolution for adopting a prioritized capital project list for the. Uh, current year. Many of those projects, if this is adopted, would obviously stretch into the next fiscal year, but they would be completed using, um, existing money from the capital improvement projects. Fund balance.
Okay. And then each of these items will come back to us for approval.
Some of them will be in different ways. For example, you could have construction contracts, purchases, um. Various, all the standard ways that they would in any normal event.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll turn resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven to the council for discussion or emotion.
I'm just gonna. Vote no on this, because I think we, we get one. One bite at this. Big amount of money, our COVID funds. I think we ought to probably. Uh, spend a little more time to make sure we prioritize that. Money. Better.
Okay.
Was it? Sorry, what is this, uh, resolution about, uh, when?
It's the capital improvement list. The five million dollars that we had, all the. Street projects.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I remember now. Yeah. Okay.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven. Here you will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
No.
Motion.
We'll make a motion that we continue this until next week when we have more members, since there was not, uh, a clear direction either way.
Second.
And Ms. Kamic?
Uh, may I make a comment first? We're not exactly sure who's attending next week yet either, so maybe we wanna do it till the first week.
Let's, I amend my motion. To a time when, um, we'll have significantly more members here.
Thank you. All right, do we have a second on that one? Are you good with that amendment?
Second, yeah.
Okay.
It's fine.
All right, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Thank you. Without a date specific, correct? Okay. All right, we have resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This would enter into a five-year agreement with Larson, Larson, Nash, and Larson Attorneys at Law. They do our indigent defense. Um, contract for defendants within our justice court. Uh, this would be a renewal, again, of a contract that we have carried out with them for many years, and it would be in the amount of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Hey, thank you. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight.
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yeah.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This would award a contract for replacement of four furnace and AC units at Harmon Senior Recreation Center. In the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars, these funds would be from insurance proceeds, um, from the current and the CIP fund.
Okay, and the insurance because it was vandalized?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will turn this, um, resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine to the council for discussion or approval? Or a motion?
A motion to approve. Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have our consent agenda, which is to ratify the city management, city manager's appointment. Of the initial members of our healthy West Valley Committee. And that is. You can, there's just one, so it would be twenty-three dash seventy. And I'll turn that to the council for discussion or a motion.
Um, my question is, how many council, how many members, uh, in this group? You know?
I'm not sure how many are on the list as provided. I know that there's no limit to the number of members that can be on the committee.
How many? People we have right now, honey, members we have right now?
Let me count through it. I can do that. It was a good number.
Yeah.
And how many of them is in West Valley City?
Um, I don't know how many live in West Valley City. Some of the bios mention that some of them do. Um, I don't know that necessarily means that the ones that don't say that aren't. There's two that say it. That doesn't mean they're necessarily the only ones, but those are the two that I know of from the bios. Did anybody already count? Fourteen?
Got twenty in the paper.
Guess some of them don't have bios. They just have their name.
Right, and there's three names at the bottom, I believe, that didn't have bios.
The issue paper has twenty listed.
Twenty?
Twenty.
Okay.
Here, my concern is, uh, years ago, we, we had a program here that exchanged student from here to. Here, my concern is uh years ago, we, we had a program here that exchanged student from here to Taiwan. And we had only one student here in our city and multiple students that came from different cities. And uh we didn't like it and we shut it down. And we did want to have more students in our city to represent our city to go to Taiwan. At that time, that's the uh uh argument about that uh subject matter. But the same thing right here, I would love to see more members uh in our city. So maybe is the, our PR department need to do something more advertised or may do something to get more people in our city to get involved in this, you know, good cause.
I'm sure that uh Jake and the other members that are basically in charge of that committee have that as a, a priority. Um, Nicole did just tell me she confirmed six more. So there's eight of the committee that are on, that are West Valley residents.
Eight.
Eight out of the twenty.
Eight out of the ten, twenty. Yes, we need more personally.
I'm uh, I'm excited for this committee and the work that they're, that they've already started. And will continue to do. These are people who want to serve our residents and help us to be more healthy. They um, they might come from outside the city, but they have connections here. Some of them have responsibilities here from the county. Um, they're professionals in the health industry. And uh and I appreciate their willingness to serve us and our residents. And whether they're residents or not, I think that we could, we could use their help. And I, I mean, I would love it if, if we had all of them residents of West Valley, but we shouldn't turn these people away because uh they don't live here. They want to help us. You know, there's a big, big difference between this committee and the sister city committee. The city was investing funds to send people to Taiwan. And, and when a bunch of them were not our own residents, that, that caused us trouble. This is, this is a different situation.
I, I personally think the same thing, Lars. I think as uh they live here, they know about our city and they need to uh study about our city instead of other people from outside the city. They don't know much about our city, our citizen here. So I know as a Taiwan group is that we spend money for that, but here the same thing is our health. You know, I think is the, the future of our city. And I, I think we need to have more people in our city to get more involved. Um, just, no, it's the, the good project anyway. I always support that. But the thing is, and we need to have more people get involved.
I move to approve resolution twenty three dash seventy. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamik?
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session, so we'll only have one more item. Um, I do want to thank you for your patience with the abnormal meeting. And we have just one more motion.
Motion to a two.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.